Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian. Approval of the agenda. Public comment. Approval of minutes of May 26, 2022. June 1st, 2022. June 2nd, 2022. June 1st was a special select board meeting for the town hall. June 2nd was a special meeting of the waste ordinance. Warrants. Payroll. June 3rd, 2022. June 10th, 22. Accounts payable. June 3rd, 22. June 10th, 22. Accounts payable for the new town hall. June 1st, 22. Excuse me. New town hall. Accounts payable. New town hall. June 11th, 22. Correspondence. Excess weight permits. We have a presentation by Foster Goodrich regarding the Green Mountain Racetrack. We have a couple of applicants for health officer. Public comment. Executive session for legal litigation. An executive session for employee performance review and salary increase discussion. Public comment. And adjourn.
Just to say that you took that.
Oh, sorry. You're right, Ange. The executive session for contract negotiations has been deleted. We don't need to do that.
You don't have any excess weight permits?
No excess weight permits either. Thank you, Tara.
Okay. Remove those. I make a motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tonight's the first night that we're going to open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before we get going?
Not seen anybody.
Nobody seen. Perfect. Moving on. Approval of minutes. May 26, 2022. Select board. Regular select board meeting.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any discussion? Corrections? Additions? deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of June 1st, 2022. Special select board meeting about the town hall.
So moved.
Back it up.
Additions? Corrections? deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. That wasn't here.
Minutes of June 2nd, 2022. Special select board meeting on the waste ordinance.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any corrections? Additions? deletions? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants. Payroll. June 3rd, 2022. In the amount of $10,860.22.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any questions? additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Payroll. June 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Accounts payable. June 3rd, 22.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any questions? Corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable. June 10th, 22.
So moved.
Back it up.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Accounts payable for the new town hall. June 1st, 2022. $8,535.
Ooh.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable. New town hall. June 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Back it up.
Corrections? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to correspondence. And I think we had one, right?
Why did I have? Original gentleman and then Sean Gardner.
Those were the ones.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I can summarize the, um, so sorry. Correspondence.
Yeah, Abbey Green.
It's, um, some of the state, like at the agency right here.
Oh, yes. I did read that.
From the state of Vermont.
About no parking.
Um, just that they're going to be removing the no parking signs, um, that are in front of the racetrack due to the fact there aren't any events or anything that happened there. They no longer consider it a dangerous area for people to park. They don't think people will be pulling over trying to park there for any reason. So they're just going to remove it.
Any questions on that? Which brings us to, um, a presentation by Foster Goodrich, who is a resident of Brookman Road. Please come up to the table and.
That was so fast. I have been to a lot of meetings in my life and I just had no idea.
Well, sometimes it can be and sometimes not so much.
Not so much. So if it's all right, I'll just give a hairy background on me and then I'll lead right into what the idea is. I grew up in Williamstown, went to Motley Berry College. I grew up on White Oaks Road. My, all of my aunts, uncles, grandparents were basically South Stream Road in Bennington. So I was always riding my four wheeler from White Oaks Road to Pownell to Bennington as a kid. Mountain biking, hiking, fishing, riding. So most of my life, even though I've traveled for work, has been spent within the general vicinity of where I stand today. My career was in vertical construction, working for Gilvane Building Company and other builders. I traveled for that. I then became a partner in a specialty glass company, which is a defense related company. And I traveled to all 50 states launching that. And my passion is in the outdoors. So after college, I was a fishing guide out west and up in Alaska. I owned a guiding business in Vermont called Stream and Brook Fly Fishing, which was out of Littlebury with a group of fellas. And I have recently purchased with my business partners, The Wildflower Inn, which is a 25 room in, up in, in Vermont at the heart of the Kingdom Trails. So we bought 300 acres and we're repositioning the inn, which is the wrong way out. So our, our business model is outdoor recreation. I left out that I also permitted a resort in North Adams, Mass. So my partners bought me out of school guard glass. They gave me enough.
Of course, sir.
They gave me enough time to take a year off. And most folks don't have that chance in life. I did. And I had to plan to create a new model for a hospitality company focused on outdoor rec. So that was five years ago. The first project I permitted was in North Adams, Mass. So I, on 120 acres, permitted a 48 key campground, which is really meant to be a high-end resort. High-end relative, but focused on outdoor recreation. The cabins were going to be nicer cabins, not just a rustic. COVID came. Project couldn't get funding. So nobody was lending for hospitality and folks that had offered to support the project financially failed. So I sold the project, played that forward into The Wildflower Inn. We were able to raise significant amounts of cash and close on The Wildflower. So I spent the last month of my life out there kicking that off. And the purpose of just proposing this idea is that I've spent the last five years self-funded, understanding outdoor recreation, second, third tier markets, how the various communities across the country survive, what drives the economies and what were the kind of constant underlying themes and the infrastructure that was in place and natural beauty, all of those things. And where I live on Brookman Road, I'm seven minutes to the Huzick River, which is a top-tier fishery in the country, let alone in Vermont, let alone in, in the East Coast. So we had it to ourselves, myself and all the residents of Pownell. But for those who really were avid anglers and pursued it seriously, we had it to ourselves for a really long time. And about five years ago, the guides found it, unfortunately. And now, you know, they're pumping several hundred boats a year around the, on the Huzick River. Whether you know that or not, there are that many that are floating at, at this point. And each boat represents $300 to $500 a day. And none of that revenue is flowing to Pownell. It's not flowing to the residents and, uh, you know, Stewart's is probably the only business that is actually benefiting from that, to be quite candid. I own a side-by-side, so anything that I talk about is just, you know, I, I love the outdoors. I love the wind in my face. So whether it's mountain biking, which I grew up riding, we'll do a very road back before Irene took it out. It was the best, best jump trail and around. That was awesome. So we used to just huck big air and ride up and huck and ride and huck. And I grew up, I learned how to shoot trap at the top of White Oaks Road, which is now all hiking trails. But, you know, there's an opportunity, if I were to look at the Kingdom Trails and look what happened in East Burke and Lindenville, and I look at other locations from Waitsfield to Waterbury down to Killington, where the trail networks have been developed for mountain biking that overlap with other, other outdoor rec opportunities, the economy is lifting and people are traveling and they're spending dollars to stay and eat food, camp, recreate, and, and otherwise enjoy the infrastructure that has been built for them. And if we look at Pownell as a whole, collectively, its topography and the natural beauty, the resources it has, it has everything that's necessary to check all of those boxes to draw people in. And then we look at the proximity to North Adams and Williamstown. And it's a natural fit as a southern gateway to basically have folks come visit Vermont, which they want to, they want to come visit and be in Vermont, but also have access to the arts and culture. All of that as background. I think that there's a real opportunity to try to buy. And so with the details of this, there are many that need to be figured out. There is no easy path. Change is difficult. It would represent change for the residents of Pownell. It would represent change for the current owners of the track. And the path to accomplish this is challenging, but I believe that there is a path or else I wouldn't be here. And so I believe there is a path to try to acquire the Green Mountain Racetrack from the current owners with the assistance of the Vermont Land Trust and with the state of Vermont and others. Habit municipally owned, use federal and state dollars to remediate and tear down the structure, which are available through municipally owned entities. So as a private entity, I couldn't gain access to, to those funds, but the town of Pownell could, as an example. Or a redevelopment authority could. And it could be something where the town of Pownell creates its own redevelopment authority specific to that property. So that has been done in the past in various spots across the country on various projects. And it would be to raise the necessary capital to acquire the property, work with the state and local governments, federal and other, to bring in the necessary funds to remediate the property, to then bring, create what would amount to a 60 to 80 spot campground, both for RVs and for cabins. I, I understand where the river quarter is. I actually met with the F250 folks on it. And so there's just, there's a lot of detail that goes behind this and it is a baseline that I have already done. And in doing so, there's an opportunity to then extend through a footbridge over to the other side. So that would be to the west side of the Huzick River, southwest at that point. And then connect into the, the new bike, uh, bike path. Multimodal path, I think is what they're calling it. That flows, that is being built in Williamstown and North Adams. And so we've already figured out how we can connect those up. And where the town of Pownell could earn revenue from this opportunity would be to lease, having been the entity that developed the property, would be to lease it to a stakeholder to run the RV park. And to use the entrance to create, and no offense to, um, meant to, uh, the gas station and Stewart's, but to create another entity that could be another full-service gas station or a creamy dairy bar or, or, or. There's also resilience associated with water. And there is the aquifer that everybody is aware of, but has no real use in, at this particular time. But if the town of Pownell is looking to create a backup plan for future challenges associated with water and/or create a leasable space and bring in a brewer, it's got enough water to support a large-scale brewery on site. And I actually talked to brewers already about the possibility of that. So there's real revenue generating opportunities using state and federal grants to fund the project that exists for the town of Pownell. And then the broader pieces, and it, you know, and I'm just very sensitive. My whole life has been in other people's backyards, so I never actually worked in my own, truthfully. Even when I worked for Gilvane and they wanted me to go after work at Williams College, I just basically said no, because that was my backyard. It was just not something I wanted to do. So what I'm suggesting represents change for the town and for the town residents and would be like a 10-year plan to try to accomplish this. And I don't pretend as somebody who's only lived here for five years, that it's what you all think is the right fit. But I do know for certain that between the acreage that North Adams owns, the acreage that Williamstown owns, that is in Pownell, the existing trail systems that are at the top of White Oaks Road, which are both mountain biking and hiking, and the amount of traffic that is taking place on the Huzick River, that it's happening around us right now. I used, I spent four years living on County Road. So, you know, the amount of traffic that happens there is, is a different story. But, but folks are looking to be outside and I just don't think we're capturing it. And I just, it is my suggestion to the committee and the board that you consider a path to capture that which is currently taking place and that which could take place. And that would be looking to reposition the racetrack, to acquire it and reposition it, and possibly even Harts Gravel Pit along with it. And Harts Gravel Pit could be the public parking and it could help support additional growth along that Route 7 corridor, draw folks in from Williamstown and North Adams and then become a destination. So just metrics. There's 120 miles of, 100 miles of contiguous mountain biking trails up in Lindenville and East Burke. It draws in over 140,000 unique new visitors a year at this point and over $10 million to the local economy. So that's an extreme exception of what could occur. It's a benchmark. All the liability laws for personal land use to support this. So interconnecting is in our favor, meaning the residents of Vermont and Massachusetts. So liability laws that are in place basically say that as long as the property is open to the public, someone does not charge for access and there's no wanton disregard for safety, then an individual cannot be held liable for someone else's injury on that property. And that has been tested and held up. And that is what allows these interconnected trail systems to take place. There's a not-for-profit entity out of Killington. It submitted and won a grant for $30 million over the next five years to connect all the independent trail systems, mountain biking in a, in a corridor, starting from Stowe and going all the way down through Waitsfield and into Killington, down through Rutland, over into Slate Valley, and then down and connect to Pownell. So there's a huge grant that has been awarded. Work is already taking place and it's an inter-path connection predominantly for mountain biking and hiking. So there will be a hub system that, that builds up and grows to that. That's going to be a five, six, seven-year project, maybe 10. So I've met with state representatives on the idea. They're supportive if we could do something. But I just want to be clear. I'm a resident that's only lived here for five years. I don't pretend to understand the will of the greater Pownell residences. And I'm just a fellow who personally has made his commitment to outdoor recreation, but chooses to live in Pownell. Because seven minutes from my house, I'm riding my trails on my mountain bike. I'm on my side-by-side and I get to Verdmont, where my dad and mom were a member and I inherited that membership. Seven minutes to the Huzick, where they're naturally reproducing 30-inch brown trout. And you have tons of folks coming up to spend money. They're just not spending it in Pownell. So I could go into much greater detail, should the board have an interest in pursuing this, about what I have and have not done. I don't pretend to know that the current owners really want to sell it, but there are a lot of paths to try to accomplish the goal. And broader than that, should you folks decide that you wanted to pursue a more recreationally based economy than what we have today? And I see this as a bedroom economy. You can tell me otherwise, but that's what I see. Then I am all for trying to help you do that. And that is the space that I have been in for five years. And I'm not going anywhere. So.
And your property up in Linden, you're, you approved and the, you've seen the success. And you've been across state lines to Colebrook and southern Maine.
Yeah. So the average, um, the average visitor for the King Ben Trails drives five hours. And just put that in. So that's New York City, right? So a huge influx from Canada. So where we are positioned is unique. You know, we're within a three and a half hour radius, MSA, so metropolitan service area. We have like, I can't remember numbers. I think it was like 40 million. No, it was like 20 million within three and a half. And then it was like, within five hours, it was like 50 million people. So I know that most folks drive through Pownell and they're like, oh, nice bedroom community. I drive into Pownell and I'm like, oh my God, if only there were trails over here, trails over there. And, you know, and all the backcountry skiing, and I won't tell you where I'm skiing, because I'm obviously on somebody else's property now at the time. But I tour a ton. So with, you know, Alpine skis and Alpine touring equipment will skin to the top and then ski. And there's just, there's excellent Alpine touring. And, you know, and I'm right next to the, I think what is fun for me is, you know, I hunt a lot, right? I fish. But I'm surrounded by everybody and everybody, whether I'm on my bike or I'm twisting the throttle or I'm dressed in camo or I'm in my expensive Alpine touring gear, everybody's waving. They're saying hi. It's a friendly community and I just think there's a lot that could be done. So that's my piece. I can go into an awful lot of detail. I can actually go pro forma on it. Like I understand the path that we would have to go down. I understand the general numbers we would have to accomplish to, to pull this off. But if downtown Bennington can raise $43 million in state and federal funds to make the Putnam Project a reality, we could do something there. So that's my piece. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, uh, one, it sounds fantastic and it really does. But I don't like, I don't like the fact that we are a bedroom community. I think we could be much more than that. And recreation is certainly one of the things that, that I think we ought to be focused on. We have a town-owned property that is, that is, uh, was gifted to the town for the purpose of recreation. And there's lots of trails on it now. And I think we can get more trails and we can get access to that. That is a little bit north of the racetrack.
So the bridge is going, the new bridge is going to go.
Right. Correct.
Yeah. Well, um, well, that, that bridge wouldn't take us to our town-owned property, but it would take us into the, what? State forest, right?
No. It'll take us, that bridge is going to take us, give us access to our town property.
Okay. That's, it's more north than I thought of it, because I brought it up on Onyx to see where it was. So, um, uh, just a couple of questions on it is, I know you said multimodal, but I, I don't think motorized vehicles are allowed on those trails.
So that's their version of saying that it, you can walk.
Walk or ride.
And pedal.
Yeah.
And, and use a, you know, an electric assist bike, which is in some cases not allowed in some places.
What about that 78-year, 70-year, 80-year-old hometown person that wants to run their golf cart down there? No. You, you opened up electric, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Down in Williamstown on the path? No.
So, uh, the, and it sounds like, it sounds great, but I, just some of the cautions are, we would have to actually extend ourselves and be, we would have to do whatever it takes. And I don't know, and I think you said you didn't know either, to purchase that property before, in order to even start the process of securing the funds to remediate. So, and there is some speculation here with, with taxpayer dollars, really.
Yep. So, so just to be very crystal clear on what my position is on this. I actually am not suggesting the town of Pownell is throwing out its taxpayer dollars to do that. I am saying that the cost to set up an agency and working with the existing state agencies to acquire it with the purpose of running it as an economic development council through that, we could look to the state and federal grants to acquire the site.
Okay. That's the part I didn't understand.
Those grants could be used to acquire the site. Once owned, then you have the ability, and I haven't talked about access, right? So right now, the current owners are pickled because they don't have access. And the railroads are railroads. I mean, that's one of the archaic old parts of the U.S. that just, man, they own the land. They own the sky above it and they own the land underneath it. And that's that. And then the town owns all the access.
We, we own, that's right. We have the south access.
We, we talked about.
But, but the town owns. And that's a huge component to making this work.
Yeah.
Now, that, what you just stated, that would fall under your redevelopment authority group.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Where's the cost out of the gate? The cost out of the gate would be attorney's fees to set it up. Uh, and then, and then very, like, simply time and energy, um, working with state representatives to lobby the capital and the governor, uh, and then using other agencies to identify federal funds. You know, Bennington's got access to real federal funds to try to get their bike path on the old Charlie Card. And they're using those and deploying those. So I just, as background, I used to be a registered lobbyist in the state of New York and other states, because I went after extremely large public sector projects. So this was right in my space. So I've went, spent five years working with Gilvane, going after really, really big public sector projects. And I had to be registered lobbyist to do that. So I was in that space. That's how I know a lot of how this works. And then I pursued it and talked with a lot of folks at the state and, uh, out of Bennington and the Economic Development Group out of Bennington, and just to really understand all of it. And then at 250 and understood where the river quarter was and, 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 and.
And I don't expect you to know the answer to this, but, uh, but my, one of my concerns would be, um, we use, we use those funds. What restrictions are there on land use and what restrictions are, and are we bringing in any restrictions to the town-owned property? My guess would be no, but I don't know that for sure.
So typically, each round of funds comes with its own restrictions for which you choose to accept them or not accept them. So to be able to say it does or does not at this point is not something I could do. But if a Vermont Land Trust is giving you funds, then they typically have some.
They have.
Some restrictions on it. If it's a grant from the state for economic development, it will likely be tied into jobs. It's just, I'm trying to give you examples of how the cash can flow.
Right.
And then the committee and the board, whatever structure it was that was overseeing it, then have to make choices on what they were willing to accept or not, except based on what they were trying to accomplish overall.
Because a lot of it falls for jobs and then community access.
Correct. It's, it's. It's most of it.
From what I've read on some of that stuff.
Yeah. Tax revenue, jobs, tax revenue, community access. I mean, that's really, and then, and then in some cases conservation.
Yeah.
But most of that property, the other thing here is Vermont has changed their regulations recently. So any commercial property that has over three acres of impervious conditions on it needs to be remediated or have a plan to be remediated over the next, I don't know, it's five years, 10 years, whatever the number is. That's real. Most folks don't realize it.
Yeah.
But underneath the, the grass and the hay, because it's flooded for so long.
Yeah.
There's asphalt.
Right.
So there's about 26 acres of asphalt down there. For real.
There's quite a few people on the board that know that.
Yeah. We were discussing. No, I mean, maybe not out there, but yes, we understand that, huh?
I grew up sneaking in there.
I think, um, in, in my opinion, I, I don't have a bunch of questions, to be honest with you. I have, I have some, but they're questions that would come. I have, I have some, but they're questions that would come as we move forward with the project, if it were to, if it were to come to fruition. My opinion is we as a board, I think at, at this time we owe ourselves and the town some due diligence in researching this project out and, and pursuing this project because there's a couple of reasons that really come to mind for me. Um, one of them is I think we are missing the boat tremendously on that outdoor recreation, on the mountain biking, on the hiking, on the skiing, just because I might be a little overweight and can't do the skiing or mountain biking or the hiking. And, and no, I'm just, what I'm saying is, I think that's what is really happening all over, like you explained in Killington and other places. Now there's also, we also have that instead of being in the center of Vermont.
Right.
We draw from
New York and Mass.
New York, Mass. And we, we have that, we have the unique feature of drawing the people that are, a lot more people that are a lot closer to us than they are to them. And most of them have to go through here to get there.
Or buy it.
Or near it, or whatever. So, so I think, I think we really have a unique situation that could play out really well for the town. I think what I'd really like to do is, um, I would like to schedule, and we don't have to schedule it tonight, I'd like to schedule a special meeting where Foster came back, where we had a public question and answer session. Um, whether we did it, people would probably more than likely are gonna zoom in if you're willing to do this. Um, and, and we could kind of see where the residents were leaning.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think that would be a really fair thing. I mean, some of them are gonna see this tonight. It's gonna be out there. They're gonna be talking about it tomorrow at Stewart's or wherever. Okay? So I think, and I don't really want to put it off a tremendous amount of time. I just think if we come back with a meeting specifically for this idea, I don't want to call it a project yet, but for this idea. And we can weigh in what people are thinking and what their attitude is, the, the residents and taxpayers of the town.
I think, I think if we did that, we could take more time to, uh, to do some investigation upfront, to understand what, you know, what uh, the things like, uh, what are the programs and what are the, the strings attached basically for purchasing the property, for remediating the property and for things like that. So that we can get a little bit more background on that.
We can start a pros and cons list.
Uh, yeah, and start a pros and cons list because it, uh, it does sound great. Um, I would love to bring, bring that kind of a, you know, business to, to panel. Um, but every time I think of business, I think it was private sector, not a public sector. That's the difference. So I, and that's where I would like to see, but now when, when you have the infrastructure, you have things like, uh, you know, a, somebody opens an ice cream shop, it'll be that's entire republic sector. And it's because we brought people in here. So that's the, those.
Uh, exactly. The brewery or whatever, whatever happens. I mean, there's, these are all just speculative ideas. But the way we stand right now, this might, once again, just my opinion. The way we stand with that property right now, or any property in town for that matter, they're idle. And they are not doing anything except for causing almost grief by people complaining with a valid complaint. Don't get me wrong. It is a valid complaint of an eyesore. And we had that, if we had, I forgot, was sixty unit, was it sixty to eighty unit?
It could be more, but at the current time, without negotiating with, um, the folks at Act two fifty, uh, you're currently capable of putting sixty to eighty in there. There is space easily and accomplishing Act two, most of what Act two fifty wants to accomplish for over two hundred. So it, it, it really has to do with negotiations with the, with the state.
And, and I mean, you know, we're talking about a footbridge that's gonna connect us into Hopkins Forest and, and into the Williams College.
There are eight hundred thousand visitors a year, pre-COVID, that showed up for Massmoka, Clark Art, Whitma, Williams College, Museum of Art, Williams College and other annually just to North Adams and Williamstown. I'm just giving you like a real metric. So you've got, you've got two neighboring communities that eight hundred thousand people showing up annually, pre-COVID, to recreate and have fun. And we got Stewart's. You know, I love Stewart's, right? And, and I love seeing to keep us on there and all the others, right? That's great. So. But again, um, I will happily come back. I can happily help with a lot of information out of the gate. Again, I'm trying to keep this very simple for the purposes of the meeting today. Some of it is very detailed.
I think you want to.
Solid question we need to get answered before we have that meeting.
Whoop, whoop, those dates, can't carry.
You got more? I just had one another question.
I know you're getting married. Schedule around you getting married.
Uh, I get married a week from this Saturday.
I thought you were talking to me. Do you want to move into, do you want to?
Twenty-fourth for me.
Twenty-fourth for Mike.
So I, I can either do something next week or it is, uh, really it with certainty, it would be the, um, like July twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. We're just going online, heck of a road. We're going to Yellowstone and I'm driving.
We could do like July twenty-first and that'll give us plenty of time to come back.
It would be.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. It, it's, it's a little over a month. It's five, five weeks, five to six weeks, the twenty-first of July. Yeah. And then we can research things out as a board a little bit on our own if we want to. But it would give us time to come up with a really good presentation. You know, it would, it would, it would give us, it would give us some time to do some stuff. I, I'd like to come back to twenty-first.
Right, I can do that.
And, and I'd like to schedule it for six o'clock, um, because I don't know how long it would go. You know, if there's gonna be a really large number of public comment and questions and whatever, I don't know. But I'd like to, I don't want to cut it short.
So the one thing I can say, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, for sure.
One thing that if there was homework to be done between now and then, that I thought, I think might facilitate the greatest amount of opportunity to answer questions would be, is there an entity other than the town of panel? So, uh, some version of an agency, economic development, redevelopment authority that you have the, um, you have the authority to create that you could then provide a, you know, um, put a board on that would be the entity that would own it, where the funds would come back to the, to the town of panel. Right? So my point to this is, is there an entity other than the town of panel? Because then the moment that that can be created where I well.
No, you're talking about something public. So if it's a board creates it, then it's part, then it's still the town panel.
It is.
But if it's a, but if it's an NGO or some sort of a nonprofit, then, uh,
And that's not what I'm suggesting. I am suggesting a municipally managed authority. I mean, using the terms that I am used to from New York State previously. But, um, an economic development authority specific to this project, I have seen that happen in other locations and it's happened up in upstate Vermont and certainly I've seen, and certainly Putnam Block, right? So that, that, that right there had a, because of the economic, Bennington County, Jim's, Jim.
Oh, VCRC?
Thanks, man. Appreciate it. VCRC to resolve that, right? So Jim and I used to roll a ball together, Huck Metalball, as far as we could. Cause it's totally different aside. So VCRC, they played, they were, they were the entity that bought Putnam Block. In doing so, that provided them access to the state and government funds that allowed them to raise the cash. So having some line of sight on some version of an entity that could conceivably, just trying to use my words carefully, could conceivably play that role, open, and I've done this homework. It does open the gateway to all of the funds. That agency, that is the one, that, that is the bottleneck in all of this. Or the authority or whatever you choose to call it.
So one thing we have, oh, I'm sorry.
You stated you got, you can go more in depth. You have that on a, you know, a piece of that that made possibly um, that plan on a, uh, not a PDF, but a PowerPoint or something to that effect.
I do.
That you could email to us.
The Parks and Recreation Committee has a, has an overlay of what I
Oh, okay.
So with the detail, do you still have that? Do you want me to resend it?
I should have it. I don't, I don't know actually. At Parks and I have it, I'm sure. Yeah, I should.
Well, I just, that, that, just a little more information to all of us while we're
I do.
Over the next couple of weeks, just food for thought as we're going.
It's detailed further.
So.
Yes.
If you could, please.
Okay, I got it too.
And as we do our research, we have to take a look at what that land trust was because that was gifted to the town. And in that trust, it does list out why it was gifted and very specific reason.
For uses.
So for uses. And we don't want to make, we don't want to do something that's gonna restrict those uses because the, the, the individual that gave us that property itemized the things that that property was for. It was for recreation, which is exactly what.
Yeah, outdoor.
There are two different commerce, I think we're having two different conversations here.
He's talking about the racetrack site. You're talking about our land that we.
So there are two different, there's a broader.
There was a footbridge going to it that would be funded and my concern is
The full bridge.
Is attached.
The full bridge.
Different footbridges.
Right, two different footbridges.
I apologize.
The full bridge that Foster is proposing or, or.
Is not funded, does not exist.
It's, it's, it's pure speculation right now. That would go from the racetrack property into the Hopkins Forest property.
That's correct.
In Williamstown.
Right.
Which is totally separate from anything that we have.
Got you. Okay.
So it would be, it would be, we would have a footbridge at the racetrack and then we'd have a footbridge at the wastewater treatment facility. So we would have two footbridges in the town.
Right.
This were to come to fruition. And, and that one down there at the racetrack property gives the recreation activities access into Hopkins Forest and then takes them into North Adams and wherever.
Yeah. And I'll just keep it real simple, right? Those rafts that float down the river right now are taking out the Northwest Hill Bridge and annoying all the neighbors. They didn't want to wait at anybody in particular, their family and their uncles. And somebody in town is currently fixing the abutments on that. And that individual who's fixing the abutments is watching people drive down to try to pull their rafts off and blocking it. And that individual is not happy about that. My point to this is there's no way to get out of the river once you put in in Williamstown.
Right.
You have to cross somebody else's land.
Right.
And the access is slowly but surely being taken away because there are that many boats. By opening up the access and controlling it and driving flow, you then have more recreational opportunities. You then have a bench space that can actually be used in the town of panel with a bench space parking and 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 and. And then all of this we've mapped out, right?
Yeah.
But it's the entity, whatever entity that could or could not be formed, that can allow for state and federal funds. That is the linchpin.
It's, what you referred to earlier as a redevelopment authority.
That's what I did. That's a New York state term that I drew and all of the, almost all, in ninety percent of the projects that I worked on, their seed capital came from some agency or authority in New York. And New York has eighty-nine different agencies and authorities though. So, but that initial cash would come in that way.
I just, I, and the reason I'm questioning is not because I'm not for it. It, this sounds like it's a, a really good opportunity and it's something I could bring, uh, but we also have to ask a lot of questions.
Yes, we do.
This is extremely complex. We want to make sure that, 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 that we're not leaving ourselves open somewhere.
We're shutting things up. Yeah, I just echo that. Just echo that. I'm actually suggesting something that is exceedingly complex. I just want to be really clear.
Oh yeah, this is an.
Okay, or like this, but it was my life.
Yeah.
So for me, it just seems
It's just another day of the, yes.
But it is not easy. It's a lot of stakeholders. It's the Putnam Block. I mean, again, it really is. It's the Putnam Block.
I think it's, I think it would be, um, I know, I know that it would be a project that nothing like this in panel, even when they built the racetrack, I'm sure has ever, panel has never encompassed something along this magnitude.
And something that, that, and this is what's kind of sticking in my craw, is this is a great opportunity for the private sector. And the only reason the private sector can't do it is because grant money and that the money for remediation is not available unless you're a municipality, which is then forcing municipalities to usurp more private property.
And I, so that's true. So if that's true, but then it's leased back and it's leased back at a rate that just covers the cost. And then you can engage in ten-year, thirty-year, a hundred-year leases, whatever you want to do. But then it becomes a public-private partnership. And so instead of thinking of it in terms of the town of panel, public-private partnerships, P3s or development models that are used across the country and typically engaged with states that have higher revenue, tax revenue, um, but, you know, New York State, Texas, you can go a lot to the South. Just Washington DC, the toll roads that are being developed, those are P3s all the way through.
I understand. I do have a lot of, um, I guess economics is kind of my.
Okay, sorry.
And I do, I do read an awful lot about public-private partnerships.
Okay.
And they have, they have pros and cons and there are some serious cons to them.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm a little, a little concerned.
So then that's one anchor. But then as the trail network develops out, you may or may not want this again. But up in the kingdom, uh, half the houses are now Airbnbs and the residents are earning revenue because folks are coming in and they're staying to bike. And so you build out the trail network. And just as a reference, and this is a real number, you want at least fifty to sixty miles of trails. If we can figure out on state, local, federal and private land to build fifty to sixty miles of trails over the next five to ten years, that draws people in for two nights a stay. On average, they'll only ride twenty miles a day. So fifty to sixty is the threshold at which folks will start using it as a destination. And I'm just, that's a real metric. So these are all the things I can help with. I don't mean to keep on.
We're gonna be dealing with national forests on a big picture.
But here's the good news. Most of it is actually private. Like there's some very large, just surrounding me and Brookman Road and three landowners. I've got seven hundred acres. And then you jump over and it's the town of Williams Town that owns another three hundred. And then that ties into the town of North Adams in between them. There's thirteen hundred acres of land.
Right.
Well, that in itself, thirteen hundred acres can support twenty miles of riding. I'm just, I'm just trying to give you real numbers so that you understand scale. And if, you know, if the darlings and the bison's were friendly, then they might be wanting to do, I'm just teasing. That's really not fair. Especially in a public session. Sorry, that's.
I apologize too. I just got your PowerPoint presentation from, from Kristen Rec. So
Oh, good.
I do have it. I'll share it with them.
Awesome. Okay, I'll stop.
No, I, I, I think I'd love to have him come back to twenty-first of July. I'd love to schedule it for six o'clock. Um, I'd love for us to do some homework. Um, I think there's plenty of things that we can do. I, I would love for the, I would love for the people in, in the town of panel to come back with some real questions.
I'm sure.
Um, and, and some real comments about, about this project on, on the twenty-first. I, I don't want to hear from, I, I, I wouldn't, I would love to hear from more than three or four people about this. I just want to put this out there right now. Um, I think it's a tremendous opportunity that we should really look into for, for the town. I think it's, I think it's a tremendous potential opportunity to turn panel into what as to steal, to steal Jimmy Winchester's term, it's a diamond in the rough. And, and I, I, I'm gonna steal that from you, Jimmy. And, um, I think it's, I think it's that opportunity potentially to turn it into that diamond that we've been waiting for a long time.
It's, it's clearly you've given this a lot of thought and that, that's really appreciated. This was a really good presentation. And it was all off the cuff. I mean, you didn't, you're not reading this through. So.
Well, you put a lot of time and research into this. I, I, I know that we, we talked about this quite a while ago and.
There's a lot of experience behind it.
That's right. This isn't, this isn't just somebody with an idea.
It's not a random idea. That's, that's the only thing I can communicate. I, I really did do some live work on that. And it really does overlap with my life and very large, complicated, ten-year construction projects. And then five years self-funding to understand the outdoor recreation market, which is an eight hundred billion dollar a year market. And then you can look at trailer sales and you can look at the roll up of all the RV parks. And I could just go down a long, annoying list of all the things that point to something like that. And the fact that there are eight hundred thousand people a year that show up and there's no high level RV park. And folks love their RVs and their Airstreams and others, you know?
Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah, that would be nice.
They do.
There's, so I think, let's bring this back to 21st. Um, at, at six o'clock and, um, we'll, we'll tackle into this again.
Awesome. I, I need you to cuss for me, cause I just, there's a lot going on.
I'll remind you.
Be repetitive.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to peace out and then I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna get crushed. And I'm here. I will be here. I will, I will do whatever I need to help support the process, just.
I'll remind you just.
Guys, I got a soccer game I gotta get to. You guys are good.
I'm good. Perfect. I think we're Thank you, Foster. Thank you, brother. All right. Um, health officer. We have two applicants for health officer. Um, I would love to bring them in for an interview. What is the board's pleasure? I think we had, we had two, right?
Yeah.
I didn't miss anybody.
Nope.
I'd love to bring those, I'd love to bring those applicants in, um, for an interview process. What do we have opening in, Tara, sorry?
Do you want to do like before a regular?
I would, I think if we did it before a regular meeting, um, before our next regular meeting, I think we would be fine if we did on the six o'clock.
I think, uh, one thing we need to know is, my recommendation anyway, is that Fred Miller is available and can help us do with the interview.
I think that's a great idea, Bob.
Yes.
We need him.
So our next regular meeting is 23rd?
Yeah.
So I would, I'd like to bring them in at six o'clock, um, and, and 6:30 probably. I don't think it would take much longer than that, than a half an hour. As long as Fred is available on tho, on that date at those times.
On the 23rd?
On the 23rd. I, you know, I don't care which one comes in first. Um, but I'd like to bring them in on June 23rd before our next regular board meeting. Uh, one at six, one at 6:30 and, and as long as Fred's available. We can reach out to Fred and see if he is, is available for that. Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
No, we don't, no, we don't go late and we don't have another night and no, it's, it is, it's a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot. So. All right. Um, good to go into public comment, um, which is kind of new for us again. We're gonna see if we have any, um, any public comment out there before we go into an executive session for legal litigation. Anybody raising their hand, Hannah? No public comment? I'll entertain a motion to you move to executive session for legal litigation. We didn't do it in executive, it could put the town, um, at risk.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we'll move into legal litigation executive session, please.
So the two are in now? Was one of them cat TV? So I make a motion, uh, we're kind of repeating the motion, but I'll make a motion when we come out of executive session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for employee performance review and salary increase discussion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recording in progress.
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve all budgeted comping increases for all town employees.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie, uh, is there any public comment? No public comment? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.